Heavenly Father, heal our world, heal our bodies, strengthen our hearts and our minds. In the midst of turmoil, give us hope and peace. And Father, be with our county council tonight and our administration as we work together to accomplish all things that are in the best interests of the citizens of this Newberry County. Here are prayer, God. Amen.
Thank you. We would like to welcome everyone here tonight. I'd also like to welcome any of those who are listening to us through video streaming. Thank you for participating in that way and recognizing the situation that we are in as a state mansion in the world with social distancing. With that being said, do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Dr. Rucker, second by Mr. Kane. All in favor? It is unanimous. Do we have any additions or deletions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Scoury. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, I think you see the instructions for amending second reading for the budget. Now, I think we have each one of them individually. So with that being said, item number three, ordinance number 041420, an ordinance to provide for the appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, for the Newberry County budget for Newberry County ordinary purposes and for other county purposes for which the county may levy a tax and receive revenues to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable and personal real property in Newberry County for all county purposes, including the sufficient tax to pay the principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness of Newberry County payable during the fiscal year, to provide for the matters relating to the Newberry County and provide for the expenditures of said taxes and other revenues received by the county during the said fiscal year, and to provide for the borrowing in anticipation of tax questions by the issuance of one or more tax and participation notes if necessary. All right, with that being said, do we have a motion? This be the second reading. We have the motion by Mr. Scoury, second by Mr. Reader. And any discussion within that? I think we've got several things that are expected to be offered for following amendment. So...
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that we are balanced at $27,38,791 after one reading of the budget and two work session. And Dr. Rucker, I think, is first presenting the 11 amendments upon which there was consensus at Monday night's work session.
Yes. If you will go back to the sheet that says it was highlighted in yellow. Mr. Chairman, would you have me read those?
I can, if you want me to.
Or would you like to read them?
You can go ahead and read them.
And that one, if you will, see on your sheet that we were deleting the salary increases for employees with the idea of later seeing how the budget might be, that we would go back and take a look at that.
Mr. Chairman, just for formality purposes, the motion is to strike funding for employee salary increases in amount of $175,191. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of 1.2 mils. Dr. Rucker has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The second one was coming from Council contingency as a partial part of that. Mr. Adams, you want to...
Mr. Chairman, the motion from Dr. Rucker is to reduce council contingency funding by $101,634 from $287,397 to $185,763, and reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of .7 mils.
Have you heard the motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
All right. The next, as part of my motion, is one-time equipment purchases for SROs.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is to strike one-time equipment purchases for school resource officers in the amount of $33,400, and to reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of 23 hundredths of a mil.
All right, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Stottman. Any discussion? Yes.
Mr. Chairman. This $33,400 is for school resource officers. And the sheriff has agreed that he could try and make up the difference some way, shape, or form, and live with this motion. But I would like to remind council that this is... that this is a part of the sheriff's office budget. And there are several more motions on here that affect the sheriff's office. And this is an essential part of his duties as sheriff. It's an essential part of his services. And I would like to say that we do have some other motions on here, amendments on here that are not essential services. So if we're going to vote to take this off, we're going to have to strongly, strongly, and I mean strongly, look at removing some of the other things that are not essential.
Okay. You've got a motion, second, discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
And the next item is to reduce facility, facilities capital repairs, which is repair the jail gas line.
Mr. Chairman, this is to reduce facility capital repairs at the detention center by $20,000 from $190,000 to $170,000. Reduce current year property tax by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of 14 hundredths of a mil. This work was already actually done in the current year budget, so there's no real sacrifice here.
All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second? All right, do we have any second, Mr. Stottman? Do we have any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
The next item is from the sheriff's fuel account.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is to reduce the sheriff's fuel by $17,000 from $167,500 to $150,500. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of 12 one hundredths of a mil.
All right, you've heard the motion. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Reader. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Mr. King.
Again, this is $17,000 from the sheriff's budget. He does perform, or his people perform, essential services for this county. He has agreed to do this and try and get by with it. But this is another example of essential services that'll be cut.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
The next item is to reduce fleet maintenance contractual services.
Mr. Chairman, this would reduce fleet maintenance contracted services by $8,000 from $472,464 to $464,464, and reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of 6 one hundredths of a tax mil.
All right, you've heard the explanation by the county administrator. We've got the motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Scoury. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
And the next item is to remove Helena Center site repairs.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is to strike funding for Helena Center repairs in the amount of $8,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalent of 6 one hundredths of a mil.
All right, you've heard the explanation. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
The next part of the motion is to reduce GIS contract maintenance. Folly over.
Mr. Chairman, this would reduce GIS contracted maintenance by $5,000 from $56,604 to $51,604, and reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, has a millage equivalent of 3 one hundredths of a mil.
All right, you've heard the motion. You've heard the explanation. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Scoury. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? It is unanimous.
The next item is a Chamber of Commerce video.
Mr. Chairman, this would reduce funding for the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of $5,000 from $15,000 to $10,000, and reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount with a millage equivalent of 3 one hundredths of a mil.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Do we have a second? Motion by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. King.
Yes, sir. The Chamber of Commerce provides services to all of our small businesses. And what they're doing is promoting our county. And we talk about business development and our economic development, and I think this is a major part and a fundamental part of that. I would hate to see the $5,000. And it's just $5,000 is not that much money. I'd just hate to see that go. And I'd like to have the council leave it in.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think we would all hate to see any of this go. But we're trying to reduce taxes in order to... and this is a new item.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, do we have a second on the motion amendment? Second by Mr. Coon. All in favor?
Aye.
It is 6-1. Was Mr. Kane opposed? Okay.
All right, the next item is to remove community hall site repairs.
Mr. Chairman, this would strike funding for community hall site repairs in the amount of $4,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount with a millage equivalent of 3 one hundredths of a mil.
King, you've got a motion. Do we have a second on that amendment? Second by Mr. Reader. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my motion. Have I missed something?
We've got one left that was discussed on Monday night, was to remove two vehicles for school resource officers...
I'm sorry, I missed that one.
From the debt service levy budget in the amount of $17,250. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount with 12 one hundredths of a mil being the millage equivalent. Is there a motion?
Yes, that is my motion. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Need for that.
Second by Mr. Stottman. Any discussion?
Again, this is a part of essential services for the sheriff's office. Although the sheriff has agreed to take the cut, this is another cut for the sheriff's office for an essential service.
Well, Mr. Coon, actually, you're right, but there were to be four SRO vehicles, and the sheriff did not feel that he could actually employ four SRO folks at this time. So we're doing what he approved.
Yes, I did say that, Ms. Rucker. The sheriff has agreed to do this, but this is an essential service of the sheriff's department. There are motions on here that aren't essential and are not governmental agencies.
All right, you've heard. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Coon will offer amendments at this time. Mr. Coon?
Yes. This will be amendment 3.12, motion to strike funding for the Newberry Museum. Did you want to continue to do...
That's in the amount of $70,000, would reduce current year property tax by a corresponding amount with a millage equivalent of 48 one hundredths of a mil.
All right, you heard the explanation. We've got a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second for the purpose of voting. All right, discussion? Yes, Mr. King?
Yes, sir. I think that, well, the Newberry Museum, that $70,000 was part of the county, part of the 2016 Capitol penny sales tax. Newberry County was going to put in seven. The city agreed to put in $70,000, and Newberry College said they were going to put in $70,000. And that was the agreement. But we went to the taxpayers and asked them to vote on the Newberry Museum along with some other things that every coin cost. And I don't... we should not do that and go back on our citizens and now tell them, "Well, yeah, we were, but we're not now."
Have the other parties produced their money for that?
Part...
The college and the city, have they honored their contributions?
I haven't tried.
If I could...
Well, I don't know that they have, but I feel like we should honor our responsibility.
Okay, Mr. King?
This is a nonessential service. It is also not a government entity. It is $70,000 that was placed in the budget for employees, for the museum. We're not giving our own employees a cost of living this year. And the sheriff's office, as I see it, has taken a cut. So have the other departments that the city operates. I'm not against any of these motions that I'm bringing up. I'm not against the museum. I'm not against the Opera House. I don't have a problem with it being funded. I only have a problem with it being funded with taxpayer dollars.
All right, you heard... Yes, Mr. Reader?
Yeah. My thing is, it's not an essential item, but I think these items down here do bring in people from out of the county and as well as out of the state, which also brings money into the county of Newberry.
All right, any other discussion?
Call for the motion.
All right. All in favor of, excuse me, all in favor of cutting the $70,000? All right, two, all oppose. It is Mr. Scoury, Mr. Dr. Rucker, Mr. Reader, Mr. Kane, myself. And I'll just go with saying that I would consider cutting them by a percentage if we want to look at percentages, but not by the whole. That's something we want to talk about later. All right, Mr. King?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Coon's second offering at 3.13 is to strike funding for Newberry Opera House in the amount of $25,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount with a millage equivalent of 17 one hundredths.
All right, that's the motion, Mr. King?
Yes, sir. Again, this is not an essential service. I'm sorry.
All right, do we have a second for that? Again, I'll second for discussion purposes. Okay, Mr. King?
Mr. Chairman, this is not an essential service. It should be provided by the county of Newberry, and it's not a governmental entity.
All right, any other discussion? Mr. King?
Yes, sir. The Newberry Opera House has provided, like Mr. Reader was talking about, brings hundreds of people in to our economy. They've improved the quality of life. I mean, along with a lot of these others that we're going to vote on here that are actually community services. I think it's part of government's responsibility or something we can do to actually fund these. The Opera House depends on that 25. Again, I think that is something that we've signed up to for years and years. We need to fund it. We need to support our community services that provide quality of life for our citizens of our county.
It's a way to help ourselves.
Other discussion?
Mr. Stottman? My only concern is the Newberry Opera House has been open there for quite a while. And I know we made a commitment to do this to help them get up and running, to help support them, but I just feel at some point in time, it's like a business. Business needs to support itself. And I agree with Mr. Coon, not sure that taxpayer dollars should be going to this, to the Newberry Opera House.
Other discussion?
My only thing is when we provide funds for Newberry Opera House, I think it allows them to lower the price of their tickets compared to what those ticket prices would normally be if they sold them for what they needed to sell them. So I think adding money to their budget allows them to lower their ticket prices a certain percentage.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of cutting the $25,000 from the Opera House? Mr. Stottman, Mr. Coon? All opposed? Okay, 5-2.
Mr. Chairman, the next motion by Mr. Coon will be to strike funding for Newberry County literacy by $6,000. Reduce current year property taxes by a corresponding amount. This has a millage equivalents of 4 one hundredths of a mil.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a second on that one?
Can you sit down?
Again, I'll second it for discussion purposes. Do we have any additional discussion? Mr. King?
Mr. Chairman, again, this is not a governmental agency as the other two. And we have cut funding from governmental agencies, essential services, and we continue to support things that aren't governmental agencies and are not essential services.
All right, Mr. Reader?
I think we need to continue funding the literacy council because we're in a county that has a high rate of literacy. And those same people who are illiterate do pay taxes to the county. And I think we need to continue to support those individuals so that they can learn to read and write.
Okay, any other additional discussion? Mr. King?
Sir, I agree whole and hardly with Mr. Reader. Literacy is one of those that, that's a feature of our county, how we teach and develop our young adults and older adults to progress and to better themselves. And the literacy, the Newberry County literacy, does that in spades. I think we ought to. That is, that's a vital function for our county.
It's well used.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, all in favor of cutting the literacy council? Mr. Coon, all opposed to it being cut? Okay. Item 3, 1, 4, 1, 6?
3.1...
I meant 1, 1, 5?
1, 5. Strike funding for small business development center by $5,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent of 3 one hundredths of a mil.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
Yes, sir, it is.
Do we have a second on that one?
One second.
Okay, Mr. Stottman? All right, any discussion?
As I've stated on the others, it's not a nonessential, and it's not a governmental agency.
Okay, any additional discussion? Mr. King?
Sir, this is like the Chamber of Commerce in that the small business development center of the county, there are three types of industries or companies that come in. There's industry companies and businesses. This targets a small business, not the medium-sized companies or the big industries that come in. And that is something that the county does not do and does not have a function. We just don't. We focus on the industry and the companies. So I, and the small business development does have. The lady that works there, she is out on the street all day long. She goes all over this county. She has, Barbara Miller is the lady, and I think we need to fund that. I mean, that is, again, that's a vital part of our economic development. It is part of our county, and it's how we're going to develop and grow.
She's doing an excellent job with our small businesses. Excellent job.
I think that's one that particularly has the ability to bring in more revenue because of the future tax dollars and all that they bring. I wish we could reach out to more small businesses, whether it's the country stores, whether it's the farmers, whatever, but...
And she does that.
But, you know, again, every little bit we can do for the small business, I think we need to try to help with. So, all right, any additional discussion? All in favor of that cut? Mr. Coon, all opposed? 6-1, Mr. Coon?
Mr. Chairman, 3.16, motion is to strike funding for the free medical clinic in the amount of $5,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent 3 one hundredths of a mil.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
All right, do we have a second on that one? No second? Okay, the motion fails due to lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman, next motion is strike funding for sexual trauma services in the amount of $4,250. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent of 3 one hundredths.
All right, is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
All right, do we have a motion on that one? A second? Okay, that one's due to a lack of a second.
Next one is to strike funding for comment bus service in the amount of $2,500. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent 2 one hundredths.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
Do we have a second on that one?
One second.
All right, second? All right, do we have any discussion? All right, do we have any discussion?
Again, this is not a governmental agency, and it's not an essential service.
Any additional discussion? Mr. King?
Yes, sir. Uh, actually, I was not, uh, in favor of the comment when they first started. Uh, the comment, for those that don't know, is a service, is a bus service or transportation service that goes between Columbia and Newberry every day, taking, uh, employees, uh, from, from one town to the other, whether it's into here or out. They did a, um, I'm going to say job fair, that's not exactly what it was, but they did an advertising venue. Um, and people like Samsung, they're bringing employees into Samsung. All they're asking is, and they're doing it at reduced price. Right now, I think Richland County is funding, uh, the overages for the comment. I may be wrong on that, but I think it's Richland. And, uh, all they're asking is that we pay some portion of that so they can make the rides to people that don't have cars and people that don't have transportation that need rides coming to work. So this serves a segment of our population and brings people both in and then takes people out, uh, that, that would not normally have a job, uh, that they can go to. So I think the comment is providing an essential service for, in, for our county, and $2,500 is just not that much.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, uh, all in favor of cutting? Steve, okay, we got two opposed, that's Steve and Mr. Coon, all in favor of leaving it. Okay, it's five, please.
Chairman, next motion is strike funding for sister care in the amount of $2,295. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent of two one-hundredths.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
All right, do we have a second to that? Second to cutting sister care? Motion dies due lack of a second. All right, 3.20.
Strike funding for village cemetery in amount of $2,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent one one-hundredth.
All right, is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Stotman? Any discussion?
Again, this is not a governmental agency. It is not an essential service.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? That's three, Mr. Coon, myself, and Mr. Stotman, all opposed to the cut. Okay, it's three, four.
Next motion is strike funding for Christmas lights in the amount of $1,500. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent one one-hundredth of a mil.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, that one dies to lack of a second.
Uh, 322 is strike funding for downtown, Newberry Downtown Development in the amount of $1,000. Reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount, millage equivalent one one-hundredth.
Is that your motion, Mr. King?
It is.
Do we have a second? Okay, that one dies to lack of a second. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we now have, um, a second reading that has been amended and, uh, call for question on the second reading as amended. All in favor of it being as amended? Think. All, all in favor of it as amended?
Yes.
To include the amendments adopted.
To include the adopted amendments.
Yes.
Okay. All right, six, all opposed? One, uh, okay. Appreciate that opportunity. At least everybody got to voice their concerns and et cetera, and know where everybody stands on those items. Uh, one of the things, I will go back and just say for commentary for the public who may be looking on the, uh, streaming video, one of the things is that with the non, the essentials, the sheriff's department, that is also an unfunded mandate from the state because we were basically given those four positions, but it was not fully funded to take care of all of them. So, uh, when sometimes we're faced with things that, and we're still already funding some of that unfunded mandate through some other things, so it's not like we've completely cut those things out and been non-supported. It's just that those were agreed to by the sheriff that it was not something that they absolutely had to have at this time. So, uh, I don't want to seem like it's something we're, we're not, um, trying to work within that. All right, item number four.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I make one remark?
Sure.
Um, in doing this, and I certainly understand where Mr. Coon's coming from, because we don't have a clue at what point we're going to ever get back to a, what I consider a new normal, uh, not a normal, but a new normal. And we don't have a clue what's going to happen next year, uh, as far as the budget, taxes, such as that. But, um, I certainly understand why Mr. Coon was trying to cut all that he could. And, uh, uh, Mr. Adams, do you mind the cuts we made tonight? Could you tally up, uh, the reduction in the mil, please?
Yes, it would be 2.71 mils to date. Am I correct, Debbie?
It's, uh, 2.6.
Oh, okay, 2.6 is the county ordinary. There is another...
2.11.
Another cut that would involve the community ser... Oh, the debt service, okay.
That would be...
Okay, it's still 2.71. Okay, it is. And the, the cuts that were approved as part of the, um, second reading, uh, would bring the levy back to 136 mils, uh, in total for all three county council levies, which is the same levy as the prior year.
Okay, item number four, ordinance number 04-15-20, an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, for Newberry County Library, Piedmont Technical College, and Newberry Agency for the Disabilities and Special Needs, to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real estate properties in Newberry County for said purposes, to provide for the expenditures, said taxes and other revenues received by the county during said fiscal year for said purposes. Do we have the motion to be a second reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. King. Mr. Adams, would you?
Mr. Chairman, there is, uh, an amendment that was discussed, uh, on Monday night, but does not yet have a sponsor, to reduce proposed funding for the community services levy by $28,106, that going from 1,3,584 to 975,478, and to reduce current year property tax revenue by a corresponding amount with a millage equivalent of .19 or 19 one-hundredths of a mil.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, after looking at this and, and talking with, uh, Mr. Adams, I really would hate to see us cut this because it really is not going to increase the millage.
Okay, any additional discussion?
I mean, well, let me just say this. Um, you know, looking at, Piedmont Tech does so much for our, our county. And certainly, we would, you know, I've, I, we need to support the disabilities and special needs as much as we can. And, and tons of people do use our library. So I would just hate to see us not do this one. And if it's not going to raise our millage, why would we not pass that?
Okay, other discussion?
Still no motion. Still no motion.
Oh, we, we don't have a motion on that?
This is not a sponsored amendment.
Okay, all right.
There's no sponsor.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I need to, um...
Motion to leave it?
To leave it in, yes.
Do we have a second on that? All right. Uh, we got a motion by Mr. Reader, a motion by Dr. Rucker, some motion, a second by Mr. Reader. Any additional discussion? All in favor of leaving it?
Aye.
Uh, six opposed? One, Mr. Stotman? So that one stays in. All right, item number five, Resolution 0220, a resolution committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between...
I'm sorry, the clerk is asking...
I'm sorry.
You didn't go to the second reading after they voted on the...
You only did the motion.
I thought we did second reading.
Second reading as amend.
Okay, it never was amend, it never was amend.
No, it wasn't. But it's, you still have to vote on the second reading, even though the motion failed.
All right. Do we have a motion to speak the second reading?
You have the motion.
Okay.
You have a second, just to call for the question.
Okay, all in favor of leaving it?
No, it's all in favor of the budget.
All in favor.
Second reading of the budget.
Okay, all in favor of the second reading of the budget, I'm sorry. As amend.
Is that leave it in?
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't get it, but...
Okay, all opposed? It's six, one, with Mr. Stotman opposing. I'm sorry, y'all. Item number five, Resolution 0220, a resolution committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between Newberry County and Project Arleser, including the provision of special source revenue credits and other matters related thereto. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, state law requires that council identify an economic development project officially in conjunction with entering into a FLO agreement with that project, and this resolution just serves that statutory purpose.
All right, you've heard the explanation by the county administrator. Do we have a motion to accept this resolution? Motion by Mr. King, second by Dr. Rucker. Any additional discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Consideration of annual indexing of elected official salaries. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, uh, the county has an ordinance that states that absent a successful vote to the contrary by Newberry County Council at its meeting, at its first meeting in May, the county-funded salary portions for all countywide elected officials shall be increased at a rate equal to the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, as determined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, unadjusted for the month, for the most recently reported 12-month period. Um, council has already taken the funding out of the budget for all of the increases, including this one. Uh, if council wishes to proceed in that, that manner, we only need a motion to provide salary increases to countywide elected officials in a percentage equal to such increases for salaries of county employees, which this year is nothing. But I want to read first, I have, uh, the sheriff has asked me to read a statement. He wants to go on record as saying that even if the possibility did exist, he would not accept the pay increase if the other employees did not get one.
Okay.
So is there, do we have a motion, uh, corresponding to 6.1?
I would make that since our employ, other employees are not getting a raise, that we would not give our elected officials a raise either.
Do we have a second on that? Just taken by Mr. Reader. Any other discussion? I think it's only fair. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Uh, we don't need an executive session tonight. Do we have anybody email any public comments?
No, sir.
Comments, uh, requests in the county administrator?
I have none, sir.
All right, comments from, uh, requests from council members, and pretty much the same thing if, um, tonight, if there's anything that you can think of outside of what we've already discussed tonight as ways to cut the budget, would please like for you to state it. So, uh, it is time, comments from Mr. Currie?
I hope that we all can go far without cuts. And you, you are kind of understand we have been accounting to go forward a year, to keep doing the hand and foot from down. Thank you, sir. By asking you to continue to do our best cuts and our best increases for Newberry County.
Dr. Rucker?
I think, I think our, our meeting went very well tonight. This is a lot to go through, and, um, and I appreciate every member's input and thoughts. Uh, I, I also think that our elected officials would take the same stand as our sheriff, and I appreciate that, too. Just go forth and stay well and be safe.
Mr. Reader?
I'd just like to tell everyone to, because of the county and the state opening up, please continue to take precautions because COVID-19 still exists, and we have to truly take precaution and, uh, stay six feet apart if at all possible. Because we do want it to eventually end, but we are far away from the end.
Absolutely.
Mr. King?
Uh, to piggyback on Mr. Reader, uh, we are coming out from under the COVID-19, stay at home early. As we get out more in public, we really have to be cautious. Please take care of yourselves. Please stay healthy.
And then, Mr. Stotman?
Uh, the only comment I will make is, uh, I want to thank Wayne and his staff for an excellent job with the budget. I hope people understand that, um, it's not necessarily something we want to do, but at this point in time, it's, it's necessary to make those cuts. But, uh, again, thank you.
Mr. King?
The budget is always tough. It's always hard to make those type decisions, especially this year because of the coronavirus and the cuts that have been, have had to be made. And Buddy, you recognized, uh, our probate judge, Kenny Nobles, Monday night. Again, I would like to recognize her again tonight, that her husband passed away, and that, uh, thoughts and prayers should be with her and her family.
All right, uh, I'd just like to, well, one, again, thank the county administrative team for what they've done to make this work. Uh, also, the department heads, because without the department's head support, one, sometimes we would not have the contingency money coming back in at the end of the year, uh, to, to help balance our budget and to give us our, um, opportunities that we do have to, to keep our balanced budget as close as we can. And, and again, it, it's tough times, it's very difficult times. Uh, I also just hope that if there is anybody out there watching, that they actually recognize the camaraderie amongst this group, that at least people can speak and say what they feel, and still, everybody's respected in their opinion. So, uh, I think we're coming up on our third, if reading public hearing will be at our next meeting, if I'm not bad wrong.
Right.
So if there are any people, anybody got, uh, comments from the public that they could email them in, uh, if we're not able to have, uh, open session again, if you just email your comments in so that we could at least hear your, hear your comments, we welcome your, your information. If there's any council members that still feels like there are cuts that could be made, again, a lot of the little ones tonight that we probably wouldn't make a significant difference in our overall budget. But, uh, if there are any big ones that you know of that's laying out there, um, and you want to bring them up, please make sure you bring them up as a council member. So, um, if, again, if you know of anything. We had a potential work session scheduled for May 11th, uh, for budget discussion purposes. Is there any reason that any council member feels we need to continue having that meeting? Or are we okay with where we are at the budget at this time? Nobody seems to feel we need one. With that being said, uh, future meetings will be personnel and intergovernmental meet, uh, relations meeting, uh, May 18th at 6:00 PM. Our next county council meeting will be May 20th at 7:00 PM, and then we'll be in the halfway point of the year, June 3rd, 7:00 PM. Uh, with that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you.